Just one second. A little bit behind because the... Okay. Can't hear anything out of my headphones, so that's not good. Hey. All right? Well, I'll try this clerk and see if it works. Just going to call the public hearing of Tuesday, May 18th to order. Counsel for the purposes of confirming forum, please make sure your video is turned on and just let the clerk know if you're leaving the meeting. Under M192, we're participating remotely. And if my connection is lost during any portion of this meeting, we'll recess the meeting until my connection is restored. Counsel loses, and the same holds for counsel because this is a public hearing and we are required if we're going to vote to to review all the information that's presented. Members of the public via the proceedings, via the live stream on YouTube, which is tweeted out, the link is tweeted out at Van City Clerk. Video of council members speaking, presentations, amendments, and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. Following a guidance from February, speakers providing comments will speak by phone and a moderator will assist in patching the speakers through when it's their turn. So clerk, can we have their roll call, please?
Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr?
Here.
Councillor De Genova?
Present.
You, councillor Frye?
Here.
Sound a bit faint, councillor Frye. Councillor Swanson?
Here.
Councillor Hardwick?
Present.
Councillor Weeb?
Present.
Councillor Boyle?
Present.
Councillor Dominado?
Present.
Councillor Bly? Councillor Bly? Not on the call, and councillor Kirby Young?
Present.
You have core, Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much. Before we begin the course, so we want to acknowledge we're on the traditional N S C territories of Musqueam, Spomish, and Slaveltiuth, and thank them for having care for these lands and look forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. Also want to take a moment to recognize the immense contributions of city staff who do an awesome job here to make our city an even incredible place. Before we begin, I have some announcements. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter at Van City Clerk for updates to the progress of the meeting. I'll also try to call the number on the list of speakers, just so you don't miss your turn. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing through the online web form at vancouver.ca/public-hearing-comment. Speakers who pre-register with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slide today, and so we'll navigate through slides by saying the word next and I'll help you along if you do have a presentation. Finally, I want to note the city of Vancouver's long-standing commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including respect for all genders. I remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, try to avoid using gender honorifics and instead refer to people by their first and last names, role, or title. Our role here at the public hearing is to be a quasi judicial body, which means council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant, or technical advice, but should save debate for after the close of the speaker's list. After hearing from speakers, council may, one, approve the application in principle, two, refuse the application, or three, refer the application to staff for further consideration. Now we're going to move to our first item, which is the rezoning on Ash Street. Staff, first, does any council member wish to declare conflict of interest? Don't hear anyone, so we'll ask clerk to read the application and summary correspondence.
This is an application by Home Star Realty Development Limited to rezone 6869 to 6909 Ash Street from RS1 Single Detached Houses in Duplexes District to RM8A Multiple Dwelling District to permit a townhouse development with a maximum floor space ratio of 1.20. If rezoning is approved, a subsequent development permit process will entail a review of a proposed form of development. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval. No correspondence has been received for this application since it was referred to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker's list and receipt of public comments.
Thanks so much. There's any speakers of this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-8333538610, participant code 61203, hashtag to get on the speaker's list. We do have Austin Norrie here from the rezoning centre, but we don't have any speakers of this item, council, so we could waive this presentation if...
Yeah, move to waive the presentation, councillor Carr.
Okay, if no one objects, we'll just... Does anybody like to see us? Are we okay moving on? Okay, let's move on. We can go to questions for, from staff, or for staff. And I'm sorry, I don't have my queue up yet. Well, maybe I'll just ask the clerks for assistance here. Do we see on the speaker's list, are there any councillors who should ask questions to staff?
Mayor, there are no councillors on the speaking queue.
Okay, thanks so much. I've got my, got my panel open now. There we go. So I just wondering if the applicant team is here to speak to the application.
Yes, present.
Would you like to present to council or just answer questions?
We're here just to answer questions, no presentation, thank you.
Okay, sure. And I'll just check once again. I don't see any councillors on the queue. So we don't have any speakers registered for this item, so I'm going to make a first call then. If you're interested in speaking this item, 1-8333538610, code 61203, hashtag to get on the list before the close of the speaker's list. And the numbers available on the live stream and on Twitter. And I'm going to ask the clerks if there are anybody on the line for this item.
No speakers, Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to call a second time then, 1-8333538610, code 61203, hashtag to get on the list. And the number is on the live stream, if you missed that quick read. Folks, anybody there?
No additional speakers, Mayor, or no speakers.
Okay, I'm going to call a third time and then we'll take a five-minute break to allow people the chance to call in, 1-8333538610, code 61203, hashtag to get on the list. This is the third and final call. Counsel, we're at 6:09. We'll come back at 6:15 to see if there's anybody who called in and then move to debate. Thanks, we'll see you in a minute. Bye.
The council is on a short recess.
We're going to close the speaker's list now and move to script A. So seeing there are no speakers, the speaker's list is now closed. Fewer no public comments received after this item is 5:00 PM today. So we're going to close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, making a decision. Any closing comments from the applicant?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Staff, any closing comments?
No, there's no comments from staff.
Thanks. I don't see any councillors on the queue for questions.
With the recommendation, councillor Carr?
Second, councillor Kirby Young.
Okay, we just have to make sure the yellow memo is included. Councillor Carr, so we'll move it with the yellow memo?
Recommendations with the yellow memo.
Mayor, the yellow memo is item two.
Oh, sorry. That's where my head is today. Okay, secretary.
Kirby Young.
Thank you very much. Move to the debate queue. I don't see anybody there for the debate, so we can move to a vote.
Point of privilege?
Yes, go ahead, councillor Bly.
Yeah, this is councillor Bly. I'll need a vote assist and I just want to confirm I've been present and following along online, so I will be voting.
Excellent. And what would you like?
In, in favor.
Thanks very much. Yes, consultation of that?
Point, point of privilege is councillor De Genova. I also will be needing a vote assist in favor. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Frye, just need a vote from you. And councillor Weeb?
I only need a vote assist in favor, councillor Weeb.
Okay, thanks.
My vote not come through, Mayor?
It has now, so we're good. Clerks will pull that up. This has passed with councillor Hardwick in opposition. Okay, thanks. We're moving to item two. Maybe we have one speaker for item two. Let me just check here. Yes, we have one speaker for item two. And if first asked, do any members of the council wish to declare a conflict of interest on this? If not, we're going to read the application and summary correspondence. Please go ahead, clerk.
This is an application by TL Housing Solutions to rezone 1885 East Pender Street from RM4 Residential District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six-story residential building containing 64 social housing units, a height of 21.6 metres and a floor space ratio of 2.92 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval. No correspondence has been received on this application since it was referred to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker's list and receipt of public comments.
Thanks so much, clerks. Anybody who wants to call and talk to this item can call 1-8333538610, participant code 61203, hashtag to get on the list. Since we deal with a speaker, we should proceed with the, with the presentation. We have Chi Chan here from the rezoning centre. Take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Chi Chan, rezoning planner for this application at 1885 East Pender Street. I'd like to confirm that you can hear me and see the presentation.
Yep, we can definitely hear you. We can see the presentation on the, yeah, on both screens, both the public and the webex, so please go ahead.
Okay. This application is being considered under the Grandview Woodland Community Plan. I would like to note that there is a memo in your public hearing package for this item. It contains a recommendation to approve this applica-, to amend this application's FSR slightly beyond what is included in the referral report. I will provide further information about the recommended amendment later in my presentation. So just shifting slides here. The site, shown here in red at the centre of the map, is located on the north side of East Pender Street, two blocks east of Commercial Drive and one lot west of Victoria Drive. This rectangular-shaped lot has a frontage of approximately 44 metres on East Pender Street and a depth of 37 metres, a site area of approximately 1642 square metres. I'm just waiting for the public feed to, to catch up here.
The two screens look the same.
Okay. The site and the neighbours to the west, south, and east are currently zoned RM4 Residential, which permits a maximum FSR of 1.45 and a building height up to 10.7 metres or 35 feet. Lots to the north, across the rear lane, front onto East Hastings Street, and are zoned MC1 Light Industrial, Commercial, and Residential Mix Use. So here is an aerial photo of the site. The scale of the surrounding developments generally include two-to-four-story apartment buildings and detached houses and commercial and light industrial areas on East Hastings Streets and northward.
Next slide.
This photo shows the existing site. The four-story building previously housing the Aaron Webster Housing Cooperative was in a severely dilapidated state and posed a neighbourhood security risk. For this reason, the tenants were relocated in 2018 by the applicant, the community land trust, and the building was demolished. I will speak about the tenant relocation later in the presentation. Four mature trees visible at the edges of this photo were retained.
Next slide.
Neighbourhood amenities, including a range of parks, cultural and community spaces such as the Britannia Community Centre, and a number of schools, churches, and childcare centres are located around the site. The site also falls within the catchment areas of the nearby Britannia Elementary and Secondary Schools, both with surplus places for additional students. The site is well-served by transit, being located within two blocks of four frequent transit bus routes, including the R5 Rapid Bus between downtown and SFU, as well as two bike routes.
Next slide.
The rezoning potential for this site is guided by the Grandview Woodland Community Plan. The housing policies in the Grandview Woodland Plan seek to maintain and increase the number of rental units provided in the neighbourhood, including mixed income and non-market housing, while also ensuring a diverse array of housing to meet the needs of present and future residents. This application falls within the northwest residential apartment area, which permits rezoning consideration for six-story buildings with a density of up to 2.4 FSR for secured rental projects. For non-market projects, Section 7 of the plan permits consideration of modest increases in height and density to assist with project viability.
Next slide.
This application proposes to rezone the site from RM4 to CD1 to permit the development of a six-story residential building with 64 social housing units, of which 43% or 28 units are suitable for families. The applicant, the community land trust, is a nonprofit society and development arm of the Co-op Housing Federation of British Columbia. CLT's mandate is to develop and maintain a stock of permanently affordable homes for low and middle-income residents. This application proposes an FSR of 2.92 and a height of 21.6 metres or about 70 feet. In the memo to council, staff recommend an amendment to Section 5.2 of the draft CD1 bylaw to permit an FSR up to 3.0. This morning, council enacted a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw regarding amendments to the RM3A, RM4, and RM4N district schedules to allow social housing apartments up to six stories and an FSR of up to 3.0. This memo recommends that this project be permitted an FSR of 3.0 in alignment with council's newly enacted amendments to the RM4 district schedule. This minor increase in FSR will provide some minor design flexibility for the applicant when completing their detailed design. The application remains consistent with the objectives of the Grandview Woodland Community Plan. As part of the Restart Smart Vancouver initiative, in response to COVID-19, this project will contribute approximately 224 new onsite and off-site construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. This application was received on October 7, 2020, and was processed through the city's SHORT programme. It has reached public hearing in just over seven months.
Next slide.
Here's a ground floor plan of the site, showing an efficient double-loaded corridor wood frame building. The proposal includes common co-located ground floor, floor indoor and outdoor amenity areas and an outdoor children's play area, all at the southwest corner of the site. The amenity spaces will get plenty of sunlight. The application, the applicant also proposes to include two ground floor, two-bedroom units that could be licensed as family childcare units. A family childcare unit can provide childcare services for up to seven children, should the tenant choose to obtain a licence from Vancouver Coastal Health. Family childcare offers a supplementary alternative to licensed group facilities and offers and offers more schedule flexibility for parents who prefer a home care setting and serves in, serves as an extra source of income for parents who wish to or need to stay home with their own children. There's a passenger drop-off space in the rear lane next to these units to facilitate pickup and drop-off.
Next slide.
The new building would house the Aaron Webster Housing Cooperative, a nonprofit organisation with an elected board of directors who are tasked with governing, operating, and maintaining the building for its members, the residents of the co-op. The proposed building meets the city's definition of social housing, where, at a minimum, 30% of units are to be affordable to households with incomes equal to or less than hills rates, ranging between $51,000 for a one-bedroom to $73,000 for a three-bedroom unit. However, the applicant is pursuing funding from BC Housing's Community Housing Fund, and should they be successful, has proposed even deeper levels of affordability, with 20% of the units at the shelter component of income assistance, 50% of units that are rent geared to income for households making at or less than the hills rates, and 30% of units at the low end of market.
Next slide.
There were 31 tenanted units in the previous Aaron Webster Housing Cooperative building on this site. Due to the dilapidated state of the previous building, tenants were rehoused in 2018 by CLT at 95 East First Avenue, a social housing building owned by the city and leased to CLT. Moving costs to 95 East First were subsidised by the applicant, and most importantly, the entire co-op was relocated together as a community to the new building and continues to operate collectively as a nonprofit housing co-op throughout the redevelopment phase. The board of the co-op receives monthly communications from CLT regarding the status of the redevelopment. The housing charges for existing members range from $267 to $1,275 per month, with an average of about $841 per month. Prior to and throughout the redevelopment process, CLT has engaged the existing tenants on the redevelopment plans in order to ensure that the members' needs are being met in the new building. As part of the tenant relocation plan back to the new building, the applicant proposes that all members will be offered the right to first refusal to return. Their housing charges will not exceed 30% of their household income and will be offered compensation for moving expenses.
Next slide.
A pre-application open house was not held prior to the application submission, as the proposed development was deemed to be consistent with the expectations of the Grandview Woodland Plan. Following submission of the rezoning application, the application drawings and details were made available online, along with my contact information and a form to easily submit feedback. The CLT-led virtual open house was held in October and November 2020. In total, we received approximately 29 pieces of feedback.
Next slide.
We heard a variety of comments throughout the review of this application. Key themes of support included the provision of affordable housing and the building's height, density, and design. Key themes of concern including, included building height, density, and impacts on views and sunlight.
Next slide.
Staff have reviewed the application and concluded that the proposed six-story height and design align with the intent of the Grandview Woodland Plan for this site. The applicant provides ground-oriented apartment units with a landscape buffer along the street and lane interfaces to reinforce the residential character of the project. The applicant has also retained four mature onsite trees along the front of the project despite the demolition, as illustrated in this elevation. The upper stories of the building are clad with lighter coloured materials to visually reduce the overall appearance of the upper story massing. The building's design, subject to the conditions in Appendix B, is appropriate for the site and the existing and future contacts along East Pender Street.
Last slide.
In summary, staff recommend approval of this application to rezone 1885 East Pender Street from RM4 to CD1, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report, as it meets the intent of the Grandview Woodland Community Plan with respect to the delivery of social housing. As per the memo, staff also recommend an amendment to the draft CD1 bylaw to increase the allowable FSR for this project from 2.92 to 3, to align with the provisions that are now available for development permit application on this site. Council is asked to move a motion to adopt the recommendation contained in the memo as part of the decision tonight on this project. If approved, the application would contribute 64 new social housing units towards achieving the housing goals identified in the Housing Vancouver Strategy. Thank you very much for listening. Staff and the applicant teams are available to take your questions.
Thanks so much. And I'm going to move the applicant team now.
Thanks so much, and I'm going to move the applicant team now. Do you wish to speak to this application?
Yes, Tiffany De Zeta, Executive Director of Community Land Trust. I actually just want to congratulate Chi. I mean, he did a fabulous job there, talking about our proposal, and I'd just like to acknowledge the hard work done by staff that have allowed us to reach this stage. They've been so supportive and understanding of not only our needs for the building but the existing community that you heard Chi describe in his presentation. And I'd just like to add that tonight is very much a project milestone for us, not only in the municipal process, but our society. This is our first freehold land project that we're redeveloping in the city of Vancouver. It really demonstrates what the community housing sector can do when we control our own land assets for growing affordable housing in the city of Vancouver. As you heard Chi explain, we're more than doubling the number of homes for the Aaron Webster Housing Co-op from 31 to 64. That will accommodate a wide variety of household sizes. You mentioned him talk about us safely housing the existing members less than four kilometres away from the subject site, maintaining that affordability not only while they're being rehoused, but also when they move back, and also inviting those members to sit at the table with us as we design their future building, and not only understand their current need, but what is the future need of their members and their growing families and aging populations and accessibility needs in their building, and how to welcome new members into their co-op, because they will be doubling the number of homes. So I'd just like to end and say, you know, we have our project team here tonight, available to answer and address any questions council may have, and other than that, we're very excited to move forward and build more cooperative housing in the city of Vancouver. Thank you.
Thanks so much. councillor Swanson, I see you on the queue. You can ask questions to the staff or the applicant. Up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what's planned to happen with the site where the current residents of this place are, 95 East First. What's going to happen with that site when it's empty?
Thank you councillor Swanson for that question. I will hand that over to the applicant to respond as to what happens once the former Aaron Webster tenants move back to the new building.
Yes, to answer that question, so they're living in 95 East First, that's 135 homes. Aaron Webster takes up 31 of those. So the Aaron Webster members will have the right of first refusal to move back into this new building, or they could apply to actually stay within the existing building that they're in at 95 East First and become members of Rail Yard Housing Co-op, which is the other co-op that is in that building that occupies the 100 and other remaining 104 homes. So they can either stay in the brand-new building that they're living now in a great community, or they can move back to another brand-new building at their old site. The beauty of that is that their housing is preserved and the affordability is preserved. And then any homes that are vacated by Aaron Webster members to move back to 1885 East Pender will roll into the Rail Yard Housing Co-op, so they'll just increase in their number of member households.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Thanks, I don't see any other questions from council at the moment, so we can go to the public. Anybody who wants to talk to this item, 1-833-353861061203 hashtag to get on the list. We do have one registered speaker, who is Blair Redlin. Blair Redlin, are you there?
I am, Mayor Stewart. Can you hear me?
I sure can, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. I'm Blair Redlin, I live near East Georgia and Semlin, which is a few blocks away from this proposed development, and I just wanted to speak tonight for a couple of reasons. One, as a neighbour of this site, I'm so excited to see, you know, a 100% co-op housing, non-market development that will double the number of units from the previous 31 to 64 and will contain opportunities for childcare onsite. This is exactly the kind of development that we need more of in Vancouver. There are many housing co-ops in this community of Grandview Woodland that have been here for many years and have been key to the livability of this community, and most recently, you know, it's good to see that they're expanding. Most recently, the beautiful, deeply energy-efficient Turner Street Co-op is a new co-op nearby here. It's excellent that the co-op and the land trust temporarily housed the residents to carefully avoid displacement. This, what is called the northwest apartment zone within the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, west of Victoria Drive, consists of really important, actually affordable housing. The area is three and four-story walk-up apartments for the most part, and so a major concern in the development of the Grandview Woodland Community Plan was ensuring this affordability is retained and that people were not displaced by other developments in this area. And so that's, it's exciting that this has come forward to be consistent with the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, and I guess that was the other major reason that I asked to speak tonight, is that this is consistent with the plan, which was approved by council in 2016 after a very stressful and angst-ridden and expensive five-year process. And, you know, the community has been seeing a number of approvals and proposals that are not consistent with the Grandview Woodland Community Plan, and one a lot of people are worried about are the mega towers at Broadway and Commercial that are coming up that are not consistent with the Grandview Community Plan. But this one, this proposal on Pender is, and so I wanted to mark that and congratulate the city and the planning department and the developer for doing this. It's going to be an excellent transit-accessible housing with really nice views for many of the people that live there. It'll be great to have these additional 64 units of neighbours in this community building there and prospering through their affordable housing co-op. So I think it's great, and I just think sometimes it's good to take a moment and mark when the city does things well, and I think it's, this is excellent, and we need more of it. We need more like this. So those were the reasons I was speaking. I'm really pleased that it's consistent with the Grandview Woodland Community Plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Blair Redlin, and I don't see any questions for you from council, so just thank you for participation, and I'm going to go now and call for the first, first call for speakers. Thanks again for calling in. 1-833-353861061203 hashtag, and clerks, have we got anybody on the line?
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Okay, second call, same number, same code. You can get it all on the live stream or on Twitter if you want to participate, and check with the clerks. Anybody there?
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Third time, 1-833-353861061203 hashtag to get on the list. Council, it is 6:38, we'll come back at 6:43 for debate and decision. Thanks. Hey clerks, just checking, has anybody else phoned in?
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. So we're going to close the speakers list, and as we've received no public comments after 5pm, we're going to close the receipt of public comments. I just asked, does the applicant have any closing comments?
No further comments, Mayor and council.
Right, and staff have any closing comments? On the rezoning centre, we're good, okay?
No further comments, thank you.
Thanks so much, and I don't see any questions for staff, so we can have someone move the recommendation.
Councillor Boyle.
With the yellow memo, I suppose.
Councillor Boyle with the yellow memo.
Second. Councillor De Genova.
I heard councillor De Genova first, thanks very much, and we'll just move over to the, whoa, sorry, council, I just have to, I'm changing to the, queue now councillor Boyle, please go ahead, up to five minutes for comments.
Thanks, Mayor, and I just want to briefly say how excited I am about this project, and I'll echo some of what the speaker Blair Redlin said and was outlined by the proponent that, I think it's a really powerful example of the, of what's possible in terms of keeping a community together, of increasing the number of, in this case, co-op housing units in two different parts of the city, and creating housing that's more affordable for a lot of folks who live here. I'm really impressed with the work that the Community Land Trust did in supporting tenants moving together to the new building and building this new building. It is, the new building is not far from me as well, and I look forward to it being part of the community, and overall, I think it's such an important and exciting gain for all of us in the city, that we have this new co-op, that we have the Rail Yard, the new Olympic Village co-op, and that all of these folks are people who work and contribute in our communities and continue to, can continue to call it home, so a great example that I hope we see a lot more of all across the city, and I am very, very happy to support it.
Thanks very much. councillor Kirby Young, up to five.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'll try to be brief, I would describe this project as a home run, in the sense that it's providing the most needed type of housing in the city, but it's compliant with the neighbourhood's plan, in this case, the Grandview Woodlands area plan, and it also is aspiring to deliver a greater level of affordability than the statutory definition of social housing, which just requires the 30% of below market. So I think that that's exciting to see, and I think it demonstrates when you work with community and people have an understanding of what's coming into their neighbourhood, how we can sort of embrace diverse types of tenure and housing type, and in a way that is sort of positive for the community and that people can sort of welcome it and get excited about it and embrace it, which is, I think, what we aspire to in terms of planning and how we put policies forward. So that's great to see, and I also noted the comment earlier from the proponent with respect to the fact that this is the first freehold project that they're doing in the city of Vancouver, which is very exciting, so nice to see the tenure with co-op, nice to see the doubling of units, nice to see support from the community, and again, compliant with the plan. So for me, it checks the number of boxes, and I'm very happy to support it. Thank you.
Thanks so much. councillor Weave.
Yeah, I'm wondering if I'm allowed to ask a point of information through to staff? I was hoping you'd get on the question list there.
Yep, I think you can.
Yeah, so first question is recognized?
One second before we go, I'm just going to check with the clerks to make sure that's correct. Just because we have, you know, shut the speakers list, if there's any additional information, but I just want to check with the clerks that we're able to ask points for information through this part of the process. Okay, magic. Yeah, we're just checking councillor Weave.
Mayor, as per the procedure bylaw, Section 1313, the order is determined for each agenda item there, and the council questions portion is now complete.
Right, so it is different than a regular council meeting, councillor Weave, just because of the quasi-judicial nature of it, that any new information has to be, you know, made public before the close of the speakers list, and so that's why at this point it's only comments.
Okay, I thought I got on the list before it got moved. Okay, I will comment, I think that the family childcare units are impressive, I think that's something we need to look at more in future buildings, I think it's a creative way of delivering childcare around the city. I would have liked to see that the amenity space be put on the roof that would allow for child play area, as well as greening the roof. I know we're seeing a lot of projects that are really taking advantage of the opportunity to create community space and amenity space that is on the roof that allows more neighbours to share little garden plots and green space and be better connected. So hopefully with the added FSR, maybe they can work in the next phase to look at opportunities to include that. I also like the fact that this follows the community plan and is endorsed by people from the community. I think the community spends a lot of work in those meetings to kind of vision out what could happen, and obviously, things grow and things change, but I like that this project is something that's exactly what we're looking for, in the sense that it's delivering the spaces available. Some people might not come back because they've fell in love with the new neighbourhood, but I like the idea of how we've moved people and kept them together as much as possible to ensure that that community, which is irreplaceable, is kept together. So really appreciate the way this project's been delivered, and I will be supportive.
Thanks councillor Weave, and councillor Swanson.
Yeah, I just think this is a great project. As a co-op resident, I'm really happy to see another co-op happening. I wish you could get more co-ops happening. I think it's great that they own their own land, they're not having to the excruciating problem of dealing with the the excruciating problem of dealing with the city about their lease, so that's great. Uh, I'm glad that they're getting, uh, provincial dough to make it a lot more affordable. Um, so, yeah, I'd like to see these all over the city, it's great, I'm really hap, will really be happy to vote for this.
Thanks, Counselor Swanson, uh, that's it for, uh, comments from, uh, from council, so I think we can move to the vote. Hey, Counselor DeGenova.
Point of privilege, thanks, Mayor Stewart, can you hear me now?
Yes, can, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I, I think I was double muted, I had to push dark six, um, point of privilege, if I could have a vote assist in favor, thank you.
Thanks very much, uh, the votes are complete, and, um, that has passed unanimously. Thanks very much, council, and good work, good work by all, this is definitely the kind of housing you need to see in the city, and, uh, very nice work. Okay, council? We're on to item number, yes, we're on to item number three, uh, sixteen fifty east twelve, I'll just ask if any council member has a conflict of interest they wish to declare at this point. I don't see any, so we'll have the clerk read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Sakozzi Architecture to rezone sixteen fifty east twelfth avenue from C two C one Commercial District to C D one Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six-story mixed-use building containing sixty-five strata titled residential units. A height of twenty-one point three meters and a floor space ratio of three are proposed. The general manager of planning urban design and sustainability recommends approval. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. Fourteen pieces of correspondence in support and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to five PM today.
Thanks so much, um, anybody who wants to speak to this item, it's one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, code six one two oh three hashtag to get on the list. Uh, we have Tess Monroe from the rezoning center, uh, council, we don't, uh, from my view, I don't think we have any speakers to this item. So, if everybody's okay, we could just move the, uh, we could waive the, uh, the presentation, but I'll just ask, is everyone okay if we waive the presentation?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, it's Kilt's car here.
Yep.
I, I don't know, um, the list that I have has seven.
Yes, you're right, sorry, I was looking at the wrong item, yeah, okay, so let's go ahead with the presentation, sorry, I just looked at the wrong list.
Thank you.
Thanks for, thanks for the catch.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Tess Monroe, and I am the rezoning planner for this application, just confirming that you can see the presentation.
We can, yes, on both screens, thanks.
Great. The site shown outlined in red is located on the southwest corner of Commercial Drive and East Twelfth Avenue. It is comprised of a single C two C one zone lot and is currently developed with a single-story commercial building and surface parking lot. As there are no residential tenants on site, the tenant relocation and protection policy does not apply. The site is currently zoned to allow for commercial development. Rezoning is being considered under the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan. For sites along Commercial Drive, such as the rezoning site, the plan anticipates six-story mixed-use and office buildings as a transition to the higher-density mixed-use development closer to Commercial Broadway Skytrain Station. To the west, sites are zoned R M eleven N, which permit four-story apartment buildings through the, through the development permit process. A number of developments in the surrounding area are under consideration as shown in purple or approved as shown in blue. The site is located within the catchment of the Queen Alexandria Elementary School, located within a nine-minute walk of the site and within the catchment of Vancouver Technical Secondary School. The site is well-served by transit, being located three blocks south of the Commercial Broadway Skytrain Station with convenient bus service on Commercial Drive. Several parks are located nearby, including Clark Park to the south and Trout Lake Park to the southeast of the site. This proposal is being considered under the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan, which is a comprehensive document designed to shape growth and change in the neighborhood over the next thirty years. It strikes a balance between a wide range of considerations, including community input, community needs assessments, citywide policies, technical and design analysis, and economic testing. The plan was approved by council in July twenty sixteen after more than four years of public process. This included a wide variety of community engagement, such as storytelling events, questionnaires, dialogue sessions, and stakeholder-focused activities. The site is within the Commercial Broadway Station precinct subarea of the plan, which provides directions to support the development of a transit-oriented neighborhood featuring a broad array of housing opportunities as well as services and jobs. At this location, shown as a red box on the map, mixed-use buildings up to six stories in height can be considered. A density of up to three FSRs suggested based on the intended urban design performance. In accordance with the plan, this application proposes to rezone the site to permit the development of a six-story mixed-use building with retail space at grade and sixty-five castrata residential units. Thirty-five percent of the units in the building are proposed as family units, which meets the minimum requirement under the city's family room policy. A maximum height of approximately twenty-one point three meters and an FSR of three are proposed. This application was received on April thirtieth, twenty twenty, and represents an approximately twelve-month review process to public hearing. A virtual open house was held for the proposal from September fourteenth to October fourth, twenty twenty, on the Shape Your City platform. Public input was received throughout the recent application process through online questions and comment forums and by email and phone. A total of nineteen submissions were received. Comments received in support of the proposal generally excited the appropriateness of the building height, massing and density, given the proximity to rapid transit, support for the building design, inclusion of the retail space, and additional housing stock for the area. Concerns generally related to building height, traffic and parking issues in the neighborhood, and an insufficient number of family units. In response to public feedback, staff note that the proposed building complies with the Grandview Woodlands Plan in terms of housing tenure, height, and density. Staff have reviewed the application for transportation impacts, and given the use and scale of development, anticipated improvements to transportation infrastructure and its close proximity to frequent transit and cycling infrastructure, staff do not anticipate any meaningful impacts to existing road network operations or safety. Additionally, parking is to be provided in accordance with the parking bylaw. The application proposes thirty-five percent of the units to be suitable for families, including twelve percent as three-bedroom units, which meets the ha, family housing requirement of the housing mix policy. Staff have included rezoning conditions requiring the inclusion of children's outdoor play area and enlarged balconies for the family unit to help address the, address the family housing requirement, as well as an improved transition to the neighboring detached houses to the west to improve neighborliness and massing. As part of the Restart Smart Vancouver Initiative in response to COVID nineteen, this project will contribute approximately two hundred and thirty new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the initiative, initiative's recovery phase. In summary, the proposal meets the intent of the Grandview Woodlands Plan, and staff recommend the application be approved, subject to conditions outlined in Appendix B. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer questions, thank you.
Thanks so much for that, uh, council, just wanted to say, I'm, I'm actually feeling quite unwell, so, I've been talking with Counselor Hardwick and, uh, uh, through, through the clerk to Counselor Hardwick, so, I'm gonna turn the chair over to, uh, Counselor Hardwick this evening, and we'll see you tomorrow bright and early, but I think I just need to keep my head down for, for a little bit, so, uh, thanks so much, and over to Deputy Mayor Hardwick, and you might need a few minutes to set up, but I'll, I'll be signing off, okay?
Feel, feel better, Mayor.
Thank you, okay, bye-bye.
Okay, um, picking up where we left off, um, just checking, we've, we've, uh, read the application, the summary of correspondence, we've had the presentation. I guess we're at the stage now, if the applicant team is here to speak to the application.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, uh, hi, Mayor Stewart and council, I guess Mayor Stewart is, is off now. Um, my name's Ryan Sacon from West Group Properties. Um, on behalf of West Group and the project team, we'd like to thank staff for the work they've done on this application, and also Mayor and council for considering this rezoning tonight. Um, we're excited about the application and how it's realized, the vision and goals set out in the Grandview Woodlands Community Plan, and also for the revitalization of retail space along Commercial Drive and residential housing in close proximity to rapid transit. We would be happy to answer any questions you may have, and thank you.
Thank you, um, are there any questions from council to staff or the applicants? Now, forgive me as I get reoriented here, can I see the control queue? Uh, I see that Counselor Boyle is on, Counselor Boyle?
I guess I do have questions, thank you, Chair Hardwick, um, my question to the applicant is actually about the retail. I'm interested to hear more about, um, what type of, uh, of at-grade retail you, um, you plan to, uh, include or attract, and how the design matches with the, the type of retail that you are aiming for.
Yeah, thank you for your question, um, as we kind of get closer to, to the construction completion, we will be going through a lease program and, and targeting different types of users. Um, one user that we are excited about and, and that we will target for the corner CRU along twelfth and Commercial is a restaurant user. Um, obviously, a, a lease hasn't been signed yet, but we're excited and, and hopefully, um, uh, going to design the building, and that's here, you especially for a, a restaurant user.
Okay, um, do, do you know if the, uh, circus play spaces, is there discussion about them staying? I know that has been a important space for a lot of parents in the neighborhood.
That has been an, an important space, and, and we're working, working closely with, with all of our, our tenants at the, the space currently. Um, and we will be, uh, uh, meeting what is in our lease terms with all of these tenants. Um, that being said, that, that, I think, I think the conversation's a little preliminary to, to understand if they will be moving.
Sure enough, I'm just interested i- in, you know, s, local, uh, small local businesses, but that, that's not a question, so, that, those are all of my questions, thank you.
Thank you very much, um, I don't see any other council, uh,
Yeah, I'm on there.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Weave.
I, am I, my question's for either the proponent or staff, and that's on the addition of a rooftop amenity, recognizing there's limited space with the view cone, so I'm wondering if that's one of the reasons why a rooftop amenity space and green roof wasn't contemplated at this location.
Uh, this is Tess from the rezoning center, um, unlike some, uh, community plan areas that allow the rooftop amenity, that policy is not part of this area, so, um, it is partially limited by the voo, view cone, and that there is no policy to support, um, an amenity room, uh, on the roof.
So, the Grandview Woodlands Plan does not allow for it, or just this component of the area?
The Grandview Woodland Plan doesn't currently, um, call it out or allow for it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, are there any other questions, no further questions from council? Uh, please note that this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions of the applicant. I'm, anybody else jumping on there, uh, in that case, we will now hear from the public. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code six one two zero three hashtag to get on the list before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Clerk, are there any speakers on the line? I've gotta just, uh, put my hands on the registered speaker list on, on the line, just a moment, please bear with me. Uh, this kind of came out of the blue. Okay, I see now that our first speaker is Matthew, uh, oh, forgive me, Waslinko. Matthew Waslinko, am I close? Clerk?
Just one moment, Chair.
Hello?
Hi, is that Matthew?
Hi, yeah, this is Matthew speaking, am I, am I on it, can everyone hear me?
You are on, and could you pronounce your surname, and are you a resident of Vancouver?
My name is Matthew Waslinko, I am a resident of Vancouver, um, good evening, Mayor, Council, I guess, uh, wishing the, the mayor the best, uh, this evening. Um, I'm here tonight to speak in support of my application for one six five zero east twelve, uh, both from the perspective as a Vancouver resident, but also as a commercial real estate broker and an advocate for new commercial space in the community. Uh, first of all, from a resident's perspective, I think this proposal has great potential to be a positive action for the area, and is exactly a sort of mixed-use project that makes sense for the property. Uh, professionally, I specialize in retail leasing and sales, and then particularly focused in the East Van area. So, to the question earlier regarding the retail, um, that's something I'm particularly interested in as well. As an industry professional who knows the community, I am pleased to see the new commercial space proposed for this part of the city. Commercial Drive, and especially the southern portion of the drive, would see significant benefit from new high-quality commercial space, and this location, given it's, um, given it's very walkable within the community, and also its proximity to transit, would certainly benefit from that as well. As it stands today, there is a shortage of quality retail locations that can support the growth in the community and also the business demand in the area. Um, speaking from my own, from my own professional background, um, we've recently had a few listings in the area that were met with multiple offers within the first two weeks of, uh, of launching, which is incredibly quick from a commercial real estate leasing standpoint and timeline. That shows to me that demand is quickly outpacing supply in this neighborhood for quality retail space. By adding new quality commercial spaces, coupled with residential uses above, this application presents an opportunity to really transform this corner and help create more commercial activity for future and existing businesses along Commercial Drive. I think this application is a worthwhile improvement for the property and one that would have a very positive impact for the neighborhood. Thank you for the opportunity to share my support with you this evening, I think this application presents a strong development for the location, and I hope you consider it favorably, thank you.
Thank you, I don't see any, uh, speakers of, or questions for you, thank you very much, Speaker. Um, let's move on to the next person on the list, who is? Molly Kavanaugh, Molly Kavanaugh, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Hi there, yes, are you a Vancouver resident, and do you, uh, you have five minutes?
Yes, I am a Vancouver resident, um, so, I'm just gonna write, or read out my speaking points here. Um, so, my name is Molly Kavanaugh, and I'm a teacher living in Vancouver. I'd like to offer my support for the project at sixteen fifty east twelfth avenue. I was excited to see a new proposal for this corner of Commercial Drive. Walking by, I've always noticed that this area needs a little bit of TLC. A combination of residential and commercial will help to connect this part of the neighborhood and will act, and with the action further north along the drive. I've been a longtime renter in Vancouver, and I know, as I'm sure you do, that to own a house in Vancouver is difficult to do, so, even in my case, where I come from a double-income household. I like that there are options like this for me on the market in this area, and in the next few years, when I'm looking to purchase in Vancouver, it would probably be in a building just like this. It's comforting to know that buildings like this, located in such a desirable area, are being built so that I'll be able to continue living where I'd like to in Vancouver when I buy a home. In my teaching program, I often hear about the shortage of teachers in Vancouver and how that directly correlates with our inability to find places to live within our price range. We're often unable to find, um, substitute teachers in the Vancouver area. Um, I hope that you'll take into consideration tonight that there are people like me who hope to continue living in Vancouver when they buy a home, thank you.
Uh, thank you for joining us this evening, I don't see I don't see any questions for you. No, I don't see any questions. Thank you for coming. It appears that Speaker Three is not on the line, but Speaker Four is on the line. So Lesley McHale, are you on the line?
I am.
Hi. Would you introduce yourself and whether you're a Vancouver resident? Thank you for five minutes.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Lesley McHale, and I am a Vancouver resident. I'm speaking on behalf of Commercial Drive Business Society today, and we wish to express our support for the rezoning application of 1650 East 12th Avenue located in our business district. The Commercial Drive BIA has been supporting and promoting growth and vitality. The UNICA since Commercial Drive, supporting local businesses for many years. Well, here's where you'll find some of the most eclectic and well-loved businesses in the city. With this close in mind, the BIA has been in discussion with West Group to ensure that the public realm announcements offered can fit in with the rest of the drive as seamlessly as possible. Our goal is that the 21 blocks of Commercial Drive from Benables to 13th create a coherent and individual brand that attracts shoppers from all over. We have been encouraged to see that West Group is interested in this as well. Our vision is aligned. Around five years ago, this BIA played an active role in developing the Granville Woodland Community Plan. The development falls under the Station Mixed Use and Employment Land Use area in the Commercial Broadway Station precinct. It follows the recommendations of the plan precisely, advocating for six-story mixed-use developments. There is rental available in this area already with more to come, I'm sure. It is my belief that the condos are well-suited to this location and will help activate new commercial activity. Condominiums will allow young families, first-time buyers, and empty nesters the opportunity to join our community and the housing market. I've been encouraged by West Group's community outreach and their willingness to understand the needs of Commercial Drive and our community. On behalf of Commercial Drive Business Society, we ask you to please vote in favor of this project at 1650 East 12th Avenue. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
And thank you for joining us. I don't see any questions. So thanks again, and enjoy your evening. Moving on to our next speaker. Sorry, I've had a lot of moving parts here. Riley Wood. Riley Wood, are you there, number five?
Hello, yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. You have five minutes to address council, and can you tell us, are you a Vancouver resident?
Hello, yes, I am a Vancouver resident.
Please go ahead.
So my name is Riley Wood. I'm calling in to support this zoning proposal. I live immediately to the south of this proposed building. I'm on the strata council of the neighboring building, although tonight I'm calling in in a personal capacity. This proposal will affect me. You know, there's going to be noise during construction, and it will actually block my personal view of the North Shore Mountains. I'm a little sad about that, but that's okay. When I moved to this neighborhood, I didn't have the expectation that it would never change again. This is a really fantastic location next to two rapid transit lines. I love it here, my family loves it here. And I think it's awesome that more people will get the chance to live here. The only objection I have tonight is to do with how this is being planned. We're all here to decide whether to create an entirely new zoning district that only applies to this one specific lot. And the pejorative term for that would be spot zoning. It just doesn't really make sense to give each building its own zoning district, but that's more or less what Vancouver planners are doing today. If you look up comprehensive development districts on the city website, we're over 700 now. This will probably be number 740 or so. It's reached a point where no one person can understand our entire zoning code, and it's because we keep creating new, unique zoning districts for mostly unremarkable buildings like this. It takes up a lot of staff time, and it takes up a lot of your time as well because you have to approve each new zoning bylaw individually. This is just a six-story building next to a train station. It's nothing really special, and it could and should be allowed under a more general multifamily zoning district. I realize that fixing that is a long-term thing, and I'm certainly not expecting you to fix it tonight. I hope that you approve this proposal as is and then take some steps toward a planning system that's simpler and less work for all of us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for joining us this evening. I don't see any questions for you. Okay, and it looks like Speaker Number Six is on the line. Oh, is Drazen Berecki. Drazen, are you there?
Yeah, hi there. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening. You have five minutes, and can you tell us, are you a Vancouver resident?
Yeah, yeah. So good evening, everyone. Yeah, so I am. I'm a local resident, and I'm a homeowner in the area as well. So yeah, so thanks for letting me have a quick couple of minutes. Sorry, I've just been trying to put my kids down here, so it's been a bit of a crazy couple of minutes here. But do thank you for the time to speak. My wife and I did move into the area just a couple of years ago as our family expanded, so we do have a young family. We love the area, and we're calling in or I'm calling in to provide my support for the redevelopment of this particular area. And so we welcome the continued growth and revitalization of the area just because we just see it as a part of the bigger picture. And we certainly understand that as the real estate prices, you know, increase across our city, you know, my wife and I think it's pretty important that we actually use, make smart use of underutilized land. So essentially, you know, we don't mind seeing stacking up of one another as far as, you know, commercial and residential uses. We also, you know, like the idea of maybe shifting some of the parking to underground, offering a greater opportunity for, you know, commercial spaces to open up, as well as we see there's a value in providing housing, you know, to all folks, right? And so that includes a combination of the houses and the condo developments that we see that are coming around us, as well as offering additional business opportunities for people that are on Commercial or close to that particular corner. And so we see Commercial Drive as a vibrant piece of, you know, Vancouver history, and we want to see that continue to grow and expand into additional spaces. You know, for us, we've been here just under five years, but we've seen a lot of growth and development and renewal in areas sort of north of Broadway where we're residing along the drive. But we've sort of noticed as we walk around and as we, you know, being that we're in the area and as you walk around and see things, we just sort of feel that maybe a little less attention is given to this particular part of south of Broadway. And so, you know, we, again, we want to support and advocate for, you know, reinvestment in this area, again, just to boost the intersection. You know, we like the idea of additional retail space. And as far as what we can see based on the plans, you know, we love what's going on. Now, it's easy for us, of course, for us to say, but we do, you know, fully support this, and we're looking to see additional growth with bodies and with families and people moving into this area. So we definitely think that the proposal fits at least what we think is a good neighborhood plan. So we are, again, in full support of its advancement. So that's, so thanks again for letting me share my thoughts. I know I have five minutes, but I've got a child who's probably a little upset downstairs, so I've got to make my way back down.
Well, thank you for speaking with us this evening. You don't have any questions, so enjoy the rest of your evening.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Good evening. Next up is Number Seven, Corey Martin. Corey Martin, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Can hear you just fine. Your name is Corey Martin. You will have five minutes, and are you a Vancouver resident?
Perfect. So bear with me. Just like the last caller, I've got my little guy right beside me, so if there's any interruptions, bear with me here. I'm not currently a local Vancouver resident. I live just outside town, but I lived close to that specific location for more than 15 years, and I've had family in Commercial Drive for about 35 years. So I've grown up in the area and known it well, and I'd like to offer my support for this proposed project. I'm also still an East Vancouver property owner. I do own commercial space, and I own a business locally, and I'm actually an active Realtor in the neighborhood as well on the residential side. So I know you heard the perspective from a commercial broker earlier. I'd like to get mine from the residential side. As a Realtor in the residential side of things, I see firsthand how difficult it is for people to enter the healthy market in Vancouver and how few options there are for people who want to be in this community specifically. I should add that I almost exclusively work in East Vancouver and largely in the Granville Woodland community. Obviously, the large majority of the first-time homebuyers cannot afford to purchase a single-family home, so most are looking to condominiums as a way to enter the market and to help their families. As such, I have many clients who've been looking for units just like these. I believe this new development will help fulfill the needs of the community as well as the broader public, and I'm happy that there will be a good selection of two- and three-bedroom homes for local families, as well as retaining the commercial spaces below. You know, as the last caller said, I used to walk by that site regularly. We made use of Circus Cafe with my young family as well. Really, it's underutilized currently. It offers no housing, which is a real opportunity, I believe. With 65 new homes, we're right by the Skytrain, bus lines, and the bike routes as well, allowing residents for easy use of public transit and access to other parts of the Lower Mainland without necessarily having to use or own a vehicle. The commercial units agreed will retain the availability of commercial spaces along the drive as well, which I know the business community is supportive as well. The combination of new condominiums alongside these high-quality commercial spaces will help draw future residents to this location south of Broadway along the drive. And this location is well-suited to this height and density as outlined in the Granville Woodland Community Plan. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you, and I hope you will consider supporting this development decision tonight. It's a great area, and I hope to see this come to fruition. Thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you very much for your time. I don't see any questions for you, so have a good evening. Okay. If there are any other speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 61203 hashtag to get on the list before we close the speakers' list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Speaker, that's still the same. Clerk, are there any additional speakers currently? What's our status?
Deputy Mayor, there is one additional speaker on the line.
Well, could we have that speaker, please? Hello, Speaker?
Yes, hello. I'm online.
Hello. Could you please state your full name and if you are a resident of Vancouver?
Sure, Deputy Mayor. My name's Stephen Bohas. I am a resident of Vancouver. I actually live in Granville Woodland. And as a renter, I'm actually not supportive of this unit, this proposal, for a number of reasons. You know, it has some items that seem to try to follow the zoning, but technically speaking, it does not follow the city's own Granville Woodland Community Plan. Now, I can go through how the Granville Woodland Community Plan is not what the City Assembly wanted. It's actually the plan that got imposed in the 11th hour by city staffers. And as their plan, there is this section called 6.7.1 that has a specific policy that pertains to this site. And you could actually go to page 112 of the Granville Woodland Community Plan and read it. It says, "The portion of any building above 18.3 meters at 60 feet in height should not exceed the typical floor plate of 603.9 square meters or 6,500 square feet, and should be spaced," and it goes on, "at least 24.3 or 80 feet from any other building above 60 feet in height." Now, the issue here is if you look at this building on the sixth floor, which meets that definition of above 60 feet, the floor plate exceeds the maximum set by staff for this site in the policy in the Granville Woodland Community Plan. And how much is it over? Well, if you look at the drawings, it says 9,595.4 square feet or 891 square meters compared to what the maximum in the plan is 603.9 square meters. So that's a significant upzone. It's actually, it doesn't fall under the policy in the Granville Woodland Community Plan. So you can't say it's following the plan. And that's one of the many inaccuracies in the staff report. And I really feel strongly that staff should be presenting accurate information and information that is true to the plan. Now, there are issues with one of the view cone drawings. It's referring to a view cone from Child Lake, which has nothing to do with that area. But talk about two other items. And one is the sequestering of the community amenity contributions. So as a strata proposal with commercial upgrade, there is 1.542 million dollars worth of CAC. But yet again, staff are recommending that this get sequestered. In other words, the CAC would be paid out at the time of enactment, and it would go into city coffers. It would go to general expenses as an IOU for the future, and the Granville Woodland community would not see this for whoever knows how long. And we can see this with Norquay with CACs being sequestered. I'm not sure if this is actually quite following the Vancouver Charter either and, you know, section of I-65 and how CACs are supposed to be allocated and spent at the moment, and also the provincial guidance. So that is a huge concern, and this is not the first time this has happened in Granville Woodland. It's happened over and over and over again with the rezonings. The CAC keeps getting sequestered and not allocated. And finally, if you look at the Granville Woodland Community Plan, and you look at, they're looking at the timeframe from 2011 to 2041. In other words, 30-year timeframe. And all the population protection, everything is based on that. It never got updated to the 2016 census. So I find it very curious if you go to the staff report and you go all the way to the appendix F, and it says that the population of Granville Woodland has grown by approximately 30 people since the 2016 census, updated the second quarter of 2020. And first of all, the goalposts has moved, but secondly, we just had like our census day on May the 11th. So if the numbers actually come out in February of next year to show that the population growth has been far more than 30 people, you know, I think there's something seriously wrong that when staff bring numbers like this forward, that I can go through and start counting all the rental and new housing that's been built in Granville Woodland. And like literally hundreds of new units have been built in that timeframe, and many new residents. So I am concerned about seeing inaccurate information or even information I would suggest to council. Well, you have to support this because we're not meeting our growth targets. And the population growth figures in staff report should not be there. And I don't want to, I really don't want to see this again in a staff report because it begs the question, who did this? Who, which member of staff is responsible? Is this Teresa O'Donnell? Is it Charlie McHale? Who is it? Is it...
I'm afraid you're coming to the end of your time. And you don't have...
So I'll wrap up then.
Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you for your time, and I do wish that some of the inaccuracies in the staff report are addressed and that you could actually modify the six stories so it meets the floor plate policy.
Well, thank you very much for speaking with us this evening. You have no questions. Thank you again. Speaker Nine was disconnected. I believe that puts us at the end of... Please read the phone number again. Forgive me. One more time, if there are any other speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 61203 hashtag to get on the list before the close of the speakers' list. This phone number will be tweeted out. If there are any additional speakers, I think, do we need to take a five-minute recess to see if any calls come in, Clerk?
No additional speakers at this time, Deputy Mayor Hardwick. But yes, please take a five-minute recess.
Great. Well, I've got 7:30 on the nose, so we'll reconvene at 7:35. At this point, Clerk, do we have any other speakers on the line?
No additional speakers.
That means that... Sorry, guys. Just trying to still move around between fields here. I think, please help me with this, Clerk. We've, there are no more speakers. Is this the point where I ask three times more?
Deputy Mayor Hardwick, please refer to script A at the, towards the end. Waive 15-minute waiting period.
I am there. Waive 15-minute waiting period for public comments. If few or no public comments were received after 5:00 PM today, that part.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. And there are no speakers present at the hearing wishing to submit additional public comments in writing. The chair may waive the 15 minutes, that part. So are there any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council? I'll call for speakers three times. Are there any speakers who wish to speak to council? Are there any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council?
No additional speakers.
Seeing that there are no speakers, the speakers' list is now closed. As few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff, and to make a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
No further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Does staff have any closing comments?
No further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for staff? Hearing none. Just double-checking. Oh, Counselor-
I am on the list.
Thank you very much, Counselor Carr. I'm just, they're changing my computer in the background here, so forgive me, I can't see my list. But please go ahead for three minutes.
Not a problem. I totally understand.
Yeah, I do have a question. Staff, it's arising from one of the speakers, and I just wanted to get staff's response to the statement that was made that under Section 6.7.1 of the Grandview Woodland Plan, if a house is, the building at the site is over 60 feet, it should not exceed a floor plate of 603.9 meters squared or 6,500-
Counselor Carr, you're breaking up. We're having difficulty hearing you.
Okay. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. I'll try, I'll try speaking more directly into the mic. So just looking for staff to respond to the question that was raised, or the point that was raised by the speaker around the plan, Section 6.7.1. If a building is over 60 feet in height, it should not exceed a floor plate of 603.9 meters squared or 6,500 square feet. So could you just respond to that, the authority you have brought forward this? If it doesn't, what is-
Counselor Carr, again, you're breaking up, and we're getting every second word. Perhaps we could turn off your video and see if that helps.
Actually, if you just hold on one second, I'm just going to replace this, this microphone headset.
Can we pause Counselor Carr's time?
Chair, can you hear, Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, now. And we just paused your timer.
Chair, are you able to hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Is that better?
No.
Okay. It's great. Thank you. My question is to staff, and it's around the, a follow-up to the speaker that noted under Section 6.7.1 of the Grandview Woodland Plan, if at the site a building is exceeding 60 feet, it should not exceed a floor plate of 603.9 meters squared or 6,500 feet squared. I'm wondering if staff can give us outline for me, the authority under which they have brought forward this application, if it was indeed conflicts with the plan.
Did you get that, staff?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Hardwick. Counselor Carr, my name is Marie Linehan, Senior Development Planner. That provision in the built form guidelines is broadly applicable to the station area. So all different types of building typologies will occur in the station area. And that, that specific point pertains to tower podium forms. So when you're above the podium, the tower floor plate is limited to 6,500 square feet to achieve objectives, objectives like spaciousness between towers. It's a standard requirement you've probably seen in other areas. It is not applicable to six-story buildings. The 60 feet reference would be a typical six-story residential building. Because this is a mixed-use building, it's slightly higher at 70 feet because we have a taller ground floor for commercial use. But it would otherwise meet the intent of being a six-story building, and the 6,500-foot cap, which is applicable to tower forms, is not applicable here. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's great. That's my question. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Counselor Carr. I'm looking, but I don't see that we have anyone else on the queue. So I'm going to go back to my script. And that takes us past council questions for staff. Council will, it says council will now make its decision on this application. Can we have a mover for, for the recommendation?
So moved.
So moved. Counselor DeGenova.
I think I heard Counselor Weeb first. Was that you, Counselor Weeb?
That's correct.
And seconded by Counselor DeGenova. Thank you very much. Is there any debate? Would anyone like to speak to this item? Looks like there are no counselors on the queue.
I'm trying to get on Swanson.
Okay. Well, please go ahead. There's Counselor Swanson. Counselor Swanson has the floor for, forgive me, is it five minutes or three minutes, Clerk?
Five minutes.
Five minutes. Counselor Swanson. Please go ahead.
I keep thinking of the report I read about the income of low-income people in Grandview Woodlands evidently 20, 20 years ago or something like that. About 40% of people in Grandview were under the low-income cutoff, and now it's about 20%. And that isn't because salaries are rising, it's because of gentrification. So I would find it a lot easier to vote for this project if there was at least a smidgen of attempt at some kind of affordability. But as it is, it's probably going to be all for people who make probably 150 grand a year, which is about 10% of our residents. And I just don't think we should be building so much housing for people with that income and so little housing for people that don't have a high income. So I'll be voting against it.
Thank you, Counselor Swanson. Is there anyone else on the queue? Help me out here, Clerk. No one else. Thank you very much. Then that case, council will now make its decision on this application. Can we go to the voting queue, please?
Point of privilege, is Counselor DeGenova voting in favor, please? Vote assist. Thank you, Chair Hardwick.
Thank you, Counselor DeGenova. I'm still trying to figure out how to vote from this new panel that's just appeared in front of me. Can you help me out, Clerk?
I can give you a vote assist.
In opposition, please? Oops. I'm Mayor Stewart, according to that, and I'm absent. Great. So is that completed now?
Vote is complete with two members in opposition.
So then I think we will move on to-
Deputy Mayor Hardwick, you need to announce the members in opposition, which is yourself and Counselor Swanson.
Thank you very much. That has passed with Mayor Stewart absent and two in opposition, myself and Counselor Okay. Moving on, making good time, and forgive me for my stumbling. Number four, CD1 rezoning, 8257 to 8273 Oak Street and 1025 to 1035 West 67th Avenue. Does any member of council wish to declare conflict of interest on item four? Hearing none. The Clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by GBL Architects to rezone 8257 to 8273 Oak Street and 1025 to 1035 West 67th Avenue from RS1 Residential and C1 Commercial to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of an eight-story mixed-use building containing 62 Stratotitled residential units, a height of 28.3 meters with additional height for rooftop amenity space and a floor-space ratio of 3.53 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval. The following correspondence has been received since this referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments. One piece of correspondence in support and two pieces of correspondence in opposition. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
I'm sorry. I was asking, since there are no speakers for this item, if we wanted to waive the presentation from staff.
Move to waive the presentation.
Can I have a second, or?
Second. Counselor DeGenova.
Thank you. All in favor, say yea.
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 Any in opposition, say nay. I think I heard all yays. Okay. In that case, we will waive the staff presentation. Is the applicant team here to speak to the application?
Yes, this is Chris Oxable from GBL Architects. We also have, sorry, we also have a member of the development team available to answer any questions if needed.
Do you have a presentation, or would you like to speak to the application?
We do not have a presentation tonight.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council to staff or the applicants? Please note, this is the only opportunity of council to ask questions of the applicant. No one is on the queue. Okay, in that case, we will now hear from the public. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 61203 hashtag to get on the list before the close of the speakers' list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Clerk, are there any speakers?
No speakers for this item.
So, at this point, since there are, is this the point where I ask three times or?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm going to call three times for additional speakers. Are there any additional speakers? Are there any additional speakers? Are there any additional speakers? If there are any additional speakers who wish to speak to this council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by the participant code 61203 hashtag to get on the list before the close of the speakers' list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. At this point, I suggest we take a five-minute recess to see if any calls have been received on the phone. And I've asked three times, so five minutes. It's now 8:52, so we'll see you back here at 8:57. Thanks, everyone.
The council is currently on a short five-minute recess. If anyone currently in the room would like...
Clerk? Okay, good to go. Were there any speakers that have called in since our five-minute break?
No additional speakers, Deputy Mayor.
Seeing there are no speakers, the speakers' list is now closed. As few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 p.m. today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff, and to make a decision. Does the applicant having any closing comments?
No, just thank you for everybody's time and we are available for any further questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Does staff have any closing comments?
No closing comments, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. And does council have any questions for staff? No one is on the queue. So, council will now make its decision on this application. Do we have a mover for a recommendation?
Yep, so moved.
Councillor Kirby Young.
Second.
Councillor Carr.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Kirby Young and Councillor Carr. Is there any debate? And no one is on the queue. Okay. We can go on to the vote. Can everyone then please register their vote?
Point of privilege, Councillor De Genova. I'd like a vote assist on paper, please, Chair Hardwick.
I think that's done. Thank you. Again, I'm not sure whether I would be seen as being Councillor Hardwick or the mayor in this case, but Clerk, if you could...
Sorry, I should say Deputy Mayor.
Or Colleen is fine. And please register me, Clerk, in opposition. Okay, moving right along. We are now on to number five on the agenda.
Deputy Mayor Hardwick, there were two members in opposition, councillor yourself and Councillor Swanson. You did not register on the voting screen, but we'll correct that after the meeting.
Thank you very much. I will get this down eventually. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to number five, CD1 rezoning 8655 Granville Street. Does any member of council wish to declare conflict of interest on item number five? Hearing nothing, the Clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Red Buffalo 8655 Holdings Limited to rezone 8655 Granville Street from C2 Commercial District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of an 11-story mixed-use building with at-grade commercial space, office space, and 55 strata-titled residential units. A height of 38.4 meters and a floor-space ratio 4.10 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments. Four pieces of correspondence in support, four pieces of correspondence in opposition, and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 p.m. today.
Thank you very much, Clerk. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 61203 hashtag to get on the list before the close of the speakers' list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. We now have Scott Erdman, rezoning planner, rezoning center, planning urban design and sustainability, here to present the application.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just want to check first, can everyone see the presentation on their screen?
Yes, I'm not sure on the public screen. There it is. Excellent. Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and council. My name is Scott Erdman, and I am the rezoning planner for this rezoning application at 8655 Granville Street. The site is located in Marpole, on the west side of Granville Street, mid-block between West 70th and 71st avenues, as seen on the map highlighted in red. Formerly a gas station, the site is currently developed with a temporary community garden. The site is in the heart of Marpole's high-street shopping area on Granville Street with low-rise commercial buildings to the north and south. Half a block to the north is the Safeway site, which includes two high-rise residential towers atop a new store. A mix of low-rise apartment buildings and detached houses are to the west and east in nearby residential areas. The site is Zoned C2, which allows for commercial development and is shown in red on the map. Sites to the north and south along Granville Street are also zoned for commercial uses. RM zones, which allow for multifamily dwellings, are to the east and west. The site is located within the catchment of David Lloyd George Elementary School and McGee Secondary School. According to the Vancouver School Board's 2019 Draft Long Range Facilities Plan, capacity exists at both schools, both for present day and for forecasted enrollment. William Mackey Park is located two blocks to the west. The Marpole branch of the Vancouver Public Library is two blocks to the north, while the Marpole Neighborhood House is four blocks to the east. The site is within a shopping area that stretches along Granville Street and includes a large amount of retail shops and services. The site is well-served by the community with frequent local bus service along Granville Street. This proposal is being considered under the Marpole Community Plan, which was adopted in 2014 and is a comprehensive document designed to manage growth in the neighborhood over the next 30 years. It strikes a balance across a wide range of policy objectives while considering short and long-term goals of the community. The site is within the Granville subarea where the plan seeks to enhance Granville Street's high-street role as a walkable mixed-use neighborhood center with a variety of shops, services, restaurants, and a mix of housing types. At this location, buildings up to 12 stories with a two-to-three-story podium and density up to 3.5 FSR can be considered. Additional density may be considered for projects that propose office space above the first floor. A mix of commercial uses, which may include retail, service, and community-serving uses, are required on the first floor with residential uses above. The proposal before you tonight was received in October of 2019. Processing time was extended for negotiation of the community amenity contribution. The proposal is for an 11-story mixed-use building with ground-floor commercial retail units, second-floor office space, and 55 strata residential units above. 65% of the units are two or more bedrooms, exceeding the minimum requirements under the city's family-room policy. A mid-block pedestrian connection is included on the north side, connecting Avery Avenue and the lane with Granville Street. Four levels of underground parking and an FSR of 4.10 are proposed. A city-hosted open house was held as an in-person event prior to COVID-19. The open house took place in February 2020 and was attended by approximately 15 people. Staff have received a total of seven responses for this application. Feedback included support for the building design and neighborhood fit for the project. Concerning included comments regarding the traffic and parking impacts and affordability of the proposed housing. Staff have reviewed the comments and have determined that the proposal meets the intents of the Marpole Community Plan for this site. Conditions have been included in Appendix B to further improve the design development of the proposal. This application, if approved, would generate nearly $2 million in CACs to be allocated towards the community benefits outlined in the Marpole Public Benefit Strategy. Further, total DCLs of approximately 1.6 million would be anticipated. As part of the Restart Smart Vancouver initiative in response to COVID-19, if approved, this project would generate approximately 250 off-site and onsite construction jobs, contributing to Vancouver's post-COVID economic recovery. In conclusion, this proposal meets the intent of the Marpole Community Plan, and the proposed height, density, form, and land uses are all consistent with what was anticipated in the plan for this location. This proposal would generate nearly 3.6 million in public benefits. Staff recommend the application be approved, subject to conditions outlined in Appendix B. Thank you, Deputy Mayor and council. Staff and the applicant team are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Is the applicant team here to speak to the application?
Yes, greetings, council members and staff. My name is Daniel Eisenberg. I am with GBL Architects, and we are here for questions. Thank you very much. We'll waive the presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council to staff or the applicants? I see, this is the only opportunity of council to ask questions of the applicant. I see Councillor Kirby Young is on the queue. Councillor Kirby Young?
Yeah, thank you. Question for staff first. I know you said it quote "meets the intent of the Marpole Community Plan", and secondly, that it meets the height. Can you be more explicit? I'm scanning through the Marpole plan looking for that information. Can you be explicit what height exactly is contemplated in the Marpole Community Plan?
Thank you for your question, councillor. So, in this part of the Marpole Community Plan, the height limitations are based on the number of stories. It's not based on a specific height as far as, say, feet or meters. So, the policy for this location says up to 12 stories.
Up to 12, so this is hitting the max permissible within the plan?
Yeah, this proposal is for 11 stories, so it's actually slightly below the maximum heights anticipated by the plan for this location.
Okay, and can you refresh in terms of the treatment? Can you describe a bit in terms of the treatment of the top story and the roof with respects to setback already? Any green space there at all or not?
There's no proposed amenity space on the roof, so it's just anticipated to be a green roof.
Okay, but is, does the plan, I know Councillor Weeb was asking about the sort of other items, does the Marpole plan allow for green space on the roofs?
So, there's no policy specific in the Marpole Community Plan... So, there's no policy specific in the Marple Community Plan that would allow for the provision of a rooftop amenity space, but should the applicant be interested, that's something that staff would be willing to consider.
Okay, and the amenity space now is contemplated to be where? If you could clarify?
So, there's a proposed indoor and outdoor contiguous amenity space, which is on level three of the proposal.
Okay, so just provided outdoor access to residents, just not taking advantage of any views from the top. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
That's it. Counselor Kirby Young?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, in that case, we will then move on to Counselor Weave.
Yeah, my question is to staff. It talked about that this process took a little bit longer because of C A C negotiations. Can you talk a little bit about how that C A C negotiations process worked on this project, recognizing it seems to be a pretty small per-square-foot C A C? I'm just wondering if it's because of the commercial and office space or area of the city or construction costs? Or what is the reason why we're getting a small C A C per-square-foot for this project?
So, with any performer review and C A C negotiations, a starting point for the conversation is based on the existing zoning. So, for this site, it's a C-two zone, which already allows for quite a bit of development potential, including residential and commercial opportunities. So, the amount of lift that's generated from a C-two site to an eleven-story building is not as much as if, say, this was a C-one or an R S-one site. And so, the amount of cash amenity contribution for this site is based on a negotiation between the staff and applicant teams regarding that amount of lift that is seen in the performer review.
But it's still under a hundred-dollar square foot. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Weave. Counselor Kirby Young is back on the queue. Please go ahead, Counselor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I do have one follow-up question. Counselor received one piece of correspondence from a nearby condo resident, I believe, behind the building that commented or seemed to be of the understanding that they would not receive sunlight in their unit until noon or midday due to the former massing of this building. Can you comment if that's accurate and with respect to shadowing on adjacent neighbors or developments?
Thank you, Counselor. So, there is some shadowing on adjacent sites that is anticipated by this development. Most of the shadowing would fall on commercial properties to the north or the lane during equinox and summer solstice. However, some shadows are expected in the morning on adjacent residential areas, both during equinox and summer solstice. But the shadowing would be limited to the mornings.
So, is that a fair statement then from the resident that there may be neighbors that don't get sunlight at all for half of the daytime hours?
Counselor Kirby Young, Marie Linehan, Development Planner. The lots to the west across the lane from this development are the most significantly impacted. The shadowing shows shadowing between ten and noon, and that would be for sites directly behind. So, yeah, the portion of the morning, there's going to be shadowing of sites to the rear west of this property.
Okay, and can you comment in context as to is it common for us recommendations perceived with a project like that when it does have an impact on a neighbor in terms of a large part of daylight like that?
Yes, so through the community planning process, when these sites were approved for height up to twelve stories, it was anticipated that there would be some impact due to the tower form, the mid-rise form. It's unavoidable to have some shadow impact in the morning. The built-form guidelines is meant to try and mitigate this as much as possible, and it does that through limiting the tower plate size and also having spacing between towers. So, other towers that might occur along Granville would have to be spaced. But yes, it was anticipated through the community planning process that there would be some morning shadow impact with the introduction of towers.
Okay, I think that's my turn.
Thank you. That's your time. All right, I don't see any other cancers on the queue. So, we'll now hear from the public. It sounds like we're hearing from the public. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code six one two zero three hashtag to get on the list before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Clerk, I believe there are speakers. We have speakers on the line to provide comments on this item. I guess I now need to go to the speakers list. Which speaker is on the line, please, clerk?
Speakers one, two, three right now are on the line.
Thank you very much. Well, let's start off with number one. I have Anna Louisa Cicero Laguna, or Legana, rather.
Yes, yes, hi.
Hi, Anna. You will have, hold on, hold. You'll have five minutes to address council. And can you confirm whether or not you're a Vancouver resident?
Yes, I am. I live right behind.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Of the development, yeah. Okay. So, I live in the co-op right behind of the development. I am a member of the Board of Directors of the co-op, and I'm here representing my co-op. A lot of the members have sent me notes and emails asking me to ask questions. And speaking about the shadow, my unit and other four units are really going to be impacted by the shadow because we only get the morning sun, and we won't be getting that sun anymore. So, we are concerned about, first of all, parkade entrance. If this is going to be on the alley, there is going to be a huge increase in alley traffic, cars idling outside our patio and balconies. It's a concern for safety of the many pedestrians in the alley as well. Also, an eleven-story high building will cast shadows on the buildings across the alley. Allowing such a tall building will open up the way for more along Granville Street. Of particular concern is the building for sale just across the alley, also of our co-op. My other question is, is there any other business and resources to support such an increase in density around the area? Also, the application says that they have seventy-three units with fifty-three parking spaces, and we all know that most families have two cars. So, she would be looking at a hundred-and-ten-plus parking spaces for that development as we already have a lot of cars parked on the street. I also have to say that I recently participated in a survey by the City of Vancouver about parking permits, and I find unfair that, like, the council is going to allow them to only have fifty-three parking spaces by making other residents pay for parking permits. But you go ahead and, you know, allow the developer to only have half of what they should have. So, this is our concerns about this. I also want to mention something. The speaker number four, which is not on the line. She is my neighbor, and she's a very ill elderly woman. She left some notes for me, and she would like me to read on her behalf. So, I don't know if this is possible at the end, maybe after speaker number three, because it's quite long, her notes, and she's a neighbor living here for thirty-five years. So, that's it.
Clerk, I don't think it's, you'll have, yes, I'm just confirming. I'm afraid you're going to have to send those comments in writing to be distributed to council. Yeah, that's the rules.
I'll tell. Okay. I'll tell her, yeah. It's quite long, two pages, so.
Oh, well, please send it through to us. I don't see that you have any questions, but we do appreciate you speaking with us this evening.
Sorry, sorry, I did have a question I forgot to ask. Is that okay? The question is, during the development, if it's approved, where are all the staff and workers going to park?
Well, this is not actually a situation where you can be asking a question of council or staff. But we're not in, this is not a forum where we can answer that. You can, staff may address this later if they wish. I'm sure staff are listening. But it's not a format where speaker, you tell us what you think rather than ask us questions. But thank you again.
Sure, yeah, okay.
So, again, thank you very much for being here and speaking with us, figuratively speaking. And again, enjoy your what's-left-of-the-evening. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Next up, Speaker two is on the line. I have Michael Cheng.
Hi, thanks, Chairman. My name is Michael Cheng. Yep.
Hi, Michael. You will have five minutes to address council. And can you tell us, are you Vancouver resident?
Yes, I'm currently living in Vancouver. Thanks for everyone, thanks for the time. First of all, I would like to show my support of this project for the following couple reasons. I really like the Marble Neighborhood. These are fantastic, one of the fantastic neighborhoods in Vancouver with a really cozy intimate fabric. I love to see the project get going on because the streetscape with the retail furniture can be completed along the Grandville Street. The next reason will be I really like the mixed-use of the project with office component. It helps to create some local jobs opportunity for us. And the next one will be about the unit mix. The project will find a lot of unit mix, the variety for the young families and downsizers. And, but I am hoping that the project can provide more smaller units, especially for us, like us youngsters or graduates can start living in this wonderful neighborhood. And the last thing is, I would like, I really like the refreshing design of the building. It helps to finishing the Marble area skyline, and that's all for my comments. Thanks a lot.
Well, thank you very much for providing your comments this evening. I don't see any questions from council. That's in fact no questions, so thank you once again. Next is Speaker number three, Q. Jun Yang.
Yes, hi.
Hi, can you, you all have five minutes to address council. And can you tell us, are you a Vancouver resident?
Yes, I am. Good evening, council members. Yeah, good evening, council members, city staff, and everyone who is in this meeting right now. My name's Carol. So, I am a Vancouver resident, and I came to here to support this development eighty-six fifty-five Granville Street. Because I came to Vancouver eleven years ago to pursue my master's degree in civil engineering in U B C, and this neighborhood is the first place I choose to settle down. Because at that time, as an international student, I'm not quite well off financially, but I still, like, I live in the basement, sharing kitchen and the washroom with other roommates, but I still really loved to live in this neighborhood because everything is so convenient, everything is working, within walking distance, like the small shops, the clinics, restaurants, and the libraries, and not mentioning the easy access to U B C. And I was not the only one who's seen this. Lots of my classmates also choose to live in this neighborhood. I was really lucky. I met my best friend here in this neighborhood. She was born and raised here in this neighborhood. But, like, unfortunately, because there's not too much condo supplies in this area, so when she graduated, she had to move out. She cannot stay with her family. But she had to move to, like, Burnaby because there's nothing on the market she can't choose. It's either duplex or single-house, that type of, you know, residence type we cannot afford as a young professional. So, really, I'm really excited to see this type of development going on in this neighborhood because, to my point of view, the solution to right now the housing price crisis is only supply. If we can supply more houses, the price will stay, like, steady or even goes down a little bit or just give us young professionals more opportunities to live here. So, another thing, because right now, I started living here when I first came here, but right now, I'm living Vancouver East. I really don't see, like, because right now in the east side, there's a lot of houses. They have two basements with and a one-living house in the back. I really don't see that is the direction to.
You have five seconds left. Can you wind up, please?
Yeah, I really support this type of development because it's a well-designed, well-sought-through. Some of the strata.
Thank you very much. No, 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 no. Thank you. That's it for your time. Thank you very much for speaking to us this evening. I don't see any questions for you, but appreciate your input. I'm just going back to the speakers list. I believe Speaker number four is not on the list, but we have a speaker number five. Is that correct, clerk?
That is correct.
So, at this point, can we go right on to Speaker number five, or do we need to go back to the phones?
You can go to five and then do the call.
Thank you very much. Speaker number five, would you please state your name? You'll have five minutes to address council and whether or not you're a Vancouver resident. Speaker?
Vivian Chung. The line is open. You can go. You can go ahead.
Oh, hi, hi. Okay, hi. I didn't know that I am Speaker number five. My name is Vivian Chung, and I am a solicitor and barrister. And I, my husband and I and the whole family actually is long-term resident of Marple Neighborhood. And we love this neighborhood very much, and I give you a few reasons. We own a house in Marple, and we are running our own business just a few blocks away down at the Grandville Street. And I have my kids studying at David Lloyd George Elementary School. And we find this neighborhood is very convenient. And what is important is everything in our daily living is just within ten minutes walking distance. Say, for example, if my parents-in-law are sick, and we can just go home immediately, and if I can pick up my child. And what is important is we spend less than five minutes in traveling to work and from home every day. And that's why I would like to introduce a concept that is the self-sufficient city within a Marple area. That means, like, Grandville Street, we see this as a commercial space, a street. And the thing is, in this Marple area, there's a lack of office space. It's very difficult to find office space, except there's only one at Grand, at Airport Square at Seventy-third Avenue. And apart from Airport Square as the office tower, there's seriously lack of office space. And the concept is, given the situation as COVID-nineteen pandemic that restricts mobility, and I think that that is. and I think that that is very convenient for each neighbourhood, that is very self-sufficient, and you can find work, office space, home, and school, hospital, everything within fifteen or twenty minutes walking distance, that, you know, that is more safer to stay where you are. Less travelling, and reduce traffic congestion, and use less petrol to reduce air pollution, and we have more time to spend with our family. So, that's why I'm just calling in and being very supportive in seeing this, mixed-use, high-rise building with retail at the ground floor, and office space at the second floor, and the upper floors as all these residential condos. And I think this is very important, and very convenient for us, for the neighbourhood, for Marpo. I think that is all that I would like to say tonight. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for joining us this evening and sharing, uh, your perspective. I don't see any questions for you, so thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, and now, moving back, uh, I think clerk, there are no more speakers on the line at the moment, so I'm gonna call three times for additional speakers. Are there any additional speakers? Are there any additional speakers? Are there any additional speakers? If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 61203 hashtag to get on the list before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. So, at this point, um, I guess we'll take a five-minute recess to see if any calls have been received. I've got, uh, eight-thirty-two, so we'll be back at eight-thirty-seven, thank you. Uh, clerk, do we have any speakers on the line?
No additional speakers, deputy mayor.
Thank you very much, and let's move on, uh... Seeing there are no speakers, uh, so, uh, do I have to say it three more times again?
No, you can move on to that line, you were just starting.
Okay, seeing there are no speakers, the speakers list is now closed. As few or no public comments were received on this item after five PM today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff, and to make a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
Hi, uh, we, we do not have closing comments, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, does staff have any closing comments?
No closing comments, thank you, deputy mayor.
Uh, now, does council have any questions for staff? And I understand councillor Swanson is on for questions to staff, councillor Swanson?
Yeah, I just thought I would ask the question that one of the speakers asked, which is, do we have any idea where construction workers will park?
Hi, councillor, Cynthia Lau, senior rezoning planner. Uh, typically, uh, construction management plans are part of the, uh, building permit and trades processes further along the line, and that gets managed at that point.
Okay, thank you, dear.
Uh, great, I don't see any other questions, uh, from council on the queue, no questions. Okay, um, so, at this time, council will now make its decision on this application, do we have a mover? Do we have a mover?
So moved. Thank you.
I can.
Dominado.
Dominado and DeGenova, thank you very much, is there any debate? Let's have a look, 'cause I see councillor Swanson on the queue, councillor Swanson, please go ahead.
Yes. So, um, this is an area that has lots of older reasonable, reasonable rent apartment buildings. Um, I was up there the other day with councillor Boyle, um, to see the Marpo Little Free Pantry, that some of the neighbours have set up to provide food to some of their neighbours that don't have a lot, and need a little help with food. Um, this is a project that's gonna be a gentrifying project in the middle of a neighbourhood of reasonable, reasonably-priced rented rental apartments. If this is approved tonight, we will have approved, uh, two-hundred-and-sixty-four units of housing. Seventy-six percent of what we will have approved will be for the ten percent of Vancouver residents who make over a hundred and fifty thousand, and twenty-four percent will be for the seventy-six percent of residents who make less than that. Thank goodness, we passed the social housing project on East Pender. But I think it's stats like that that explain to some extent, at least one reason why we have a housing crisis, is that most of the housing that we're approving is for people that are at the higher-end of the income scale, and I don't wanna be part of that. So, that's it for me.
Thank you councillor Swanson, I see councillor Weeb up next, councillor Weeb?
Um, yes, I will be supportive of the project, I do wish that we'd be able to capture more of the land value, um, to deliver the amenities in the area, um, recognizing that we do need to improve Willie Mackey Park. There's five co-ops, and I think there's a huge opportunity to create more green space, as well as a community garden, um, for that area. And I know that the funding has dried up with COVID to deliver some of the amenities, um, in Willie Mackey Park, and so projects like this can help support that. I'm also supportive of the commercial, um, bringing job space to Marpo. I think it's critical in our complete communities to have a good mix of, um, residential housing types, as well as commercial and job space, so I will be supportive. I do hope in the future we can find ways to better capture the land lift to deliver the amenities, um, that are much needed in this area.
Thank you councillor Weeb, I don't see anybody else on the queue. Uh, okay, so, that means that we can move to decision. Uh, we had a, we had, uh, it moved and seconded, we've had any debate, so, let's vote. Okay, it appears that everyone has voted, um, again, no, I'm looking for councillor Kirby Young. Councillor Kirby Young, can you please, ah, there we go. As we s- know, Mayor Stewart is away, and there are two in opposition, uh, councillor Swanson and myself. Okay. So, I think that's it. Uh, can you help me out here clerk? I, uh, here we go, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, councillor DeGenova.
Second, councillor Dominado.
Thank you both, uh, record time tonight. Uh, thank you for, uh, uh, produ- productive time, and thank you for putting up for, uh, with my stumbling.
Well done Chair Hardwick, you ran that smoothly.
Good job, thank you.
Well done.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Take care, see you tomorrow.
Good morning.
Good night.
Good job, thanks staff.